Sam, can you switch us to the next slide, please? Great, so everyone should have received paper copies. So if you are dialed into the Zoom, you'll be seeing the presentation or else you can have a paper copy. Thank you, Christina, for showing it. We're also recording this presentation and we'll make it available on our website. You should also have received a two-page frequently asked questions document. We have additional copies at the property management office, but please feel free to refer there. Everyone is muted right now, and there will be opportunities for you to ask questions and get answered at the end. If you have any questions in the meantime, please feel free to put it in the chat, or you can also chat specifically to questions@hrp, which is being run by Ayanna Oliver-Taylor, and she will consolidate all of the questions that are asked in the chat for us to answer at the end of our presentation. We'll run through those logistics again when we get to that point in the presentation. Next slide, please. So today's agenda, we're going to introduce ourselves. And I said at the very beginning, but again, this is Judy Herbstman. I'm with Settlement Housing Fund, and we are a nonprofit developer. We're going to introduce our team. You'll hear a message from NYCHA. We'll go through a lot of information about what we're planning on doing and what the construction scope is going to be, how we're going to make sure to maintain safety given the pandemic. We know that these are really important details to everyone and that this is really the first of several town halls. But we're also going to be available by email and phone and other methods. So we want to make sure to share this information with you and to answer all of your questions. We really, really appreciate that you're participating. I think that this is just obviously so personal and so important for people because this is your home. And so to start off, thank you so much for joining. So with this, I will turn it over to Kyle from NYCHA, who's going to give us a message.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kyle Louie, and I work for NYCHA's Real Estate Development Department. Thank you for coming out to the seventh meeting on the PAC program at Harlem River Houses, and welcome. While there have been many meetings at Harlem River on the PAC program, today is the first meeting with the entire project team, inclusive of NYCHA's partners. Tonight, NYCHA's partners will be introducing themselves and the work they will be doing in partnership with NYCHA. As you'll learn from today's presentation, the partnership between NYCHA and Harlem River Preservation will bring critical resources to Harlem River and vital repairs and improvements throughout the developments. We would like to reiterate that this partnership will continue to preserve the permanent affordability of NYCHA's units and preserve and protect resident rights. This partnership will also enhance onsite social services. And our partners from Harlem River Presentation will be talking more about the selected social service provider. There is much work to be done in the coming months, and everyone's participation and collaboration will be critical to the success of this project. Over the coming months, NYCHA and Harlem River Preservation will ensure to center your voices in this process and ensure that your input is used to shape the project. And I will hand it over to our partners to continue the presentation. Thank you.
Alexa, you are up.
Hi, my name is Alexa Sewell, the President of Settlement Housing Fund. I've been at Settlement Housing for about seven years now, and this is our first PAC project that we've done. But we have a very long history of affordable housing development and ownership in New York City. So I just want to tell you a little bit quickly about us so you can get a sense of who we are. We have 51 years of experience. We've been around for 51 years. And we currently own and operate around 1,800 units of affordable housing. We do have some housing in Upper Manhattan and on the Lower East Side and in Brooklyn. Our largest development is in the Mount Eden section of the Bronx. It's called New Settlement Apartments. Some of you may have heard of it because it's quite big and it's been there for a long time. And there are a lot of community programs associated with it, as well as a community center on Jerome Avenue, which has a pool and after-school programs and all sorts of great programming up there. We also recently up there did a 900-unit in-place rehab project that's not that different from the project that we're going to be doing with you all. So we have some really terrific experience. And I guess one other thing to note, it's true for Settlement Housing Fund and for West Harlem. We are nonprofits, which means essentially that we are very mission-driven. And in our case, and in the case of West Harlem Group as well, we are committed to affordability and long-term affordability in all of our projects and are committed to serving low and moderate income New Yorkers. So very, very excited about this project and excited to start meeting some of you, hopefully sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Alexa. And now I'll turn it over to West Harlem Group Assistance. And so Settlement Housing Fund and West Harlem Group Assistance together are the two nonprofit developers who are going to be working on Harlem River with you all. Christina?
Sorry, hi. Christina Heath, I'm Senior Project Manager with West Harlem Group. As Judy explained, we're one of the co-developers, and we're very excited to be a part of this project. If you're not familiar with West Harlem, we've been in existence and operating community development since 1971 in the community. We offer, in addition to affordable housing, transitional housing, and a host of social services, including a food pantry in Harlem. So again, we're very excited to be a part of you along this journey.
Thank you, Christina. And now we'll introduce the general contractor, who will be doing all of the construction work onsite, and the property manager, who is going to be taking over as the property management once we convert next summer. So I'll go to L&amp;M Builders first.
Thanks, Judy. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing us to make this presentation to you this evening. I'm Chuck Gerlach, the Project Executive for L&amp;M Builders Group. We will be the general contractor on this project, and we are very honored to be participating in this exciting project and revitalizing this community. We are bringing a professional and qualified team that is currently finishing another project for us at the Baychester-Murphy Project in the Bronx, which is another NYCHA project. All the staff and subcontractors have extensive experience with tenant-in-place rehab work. And over the past 30 years, we've completed several thousand units with over 1,500 on NYCHA properties. We work closely with the Tenant Association and Property Management to keep our residents informed of our progress and to keep any disruptions during the process in your homes to a minimum. We have a proven experience bringing in local residents to work in the various construction trades, and we will engage them also on this project. We look forward to getting started and working with everyone and having an successful project with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. And CNC? I think Mike is going to introduce.
Yes, good evening. My name is Michael Prush, and I'm the Vice President of Property Management at CNC Apartment Management. And we're really excited to introduce our company and to have been selected as the managing agent for Harlem River. CNC is a full-service management company, which means that we have very significant resources, both on the backend and on the frontend of building operations. Affordable housing is the core of our business model. Over 90% of the units that we have under management throughout our entire portfolio are affordable housing developments. So that is what we do, and it's essentially what sets us apart from other management companies in the industry. We also have significant experience in property transitions, preservation deals, and exactly what's going to occur at Harlem River, which we'll discuss a little further on. To date, we have helped preserve and run on the affordable side and management side over 6,300 units, which were very similar projects to what's in store for Harlem River. And currently CNC Management operates about 18,000 units currently under management. And that includes a conversion of 1,700 units under RAD, Rental Assistance Demonstration, and over six, close to 1,600 units of NYCHA assets. Our main focus is really on customer service, as well as diligent and continuous communication with residents, both during the construction period, which is so critical, to be very transparent, to provide proper notification, and just to keep residents abreast of what's in store and what is actually happening. And certainly, we apply that same logic long-term as we continue to manage Harlem River for many years to come.
Thank you so much, Mike. So first of all, I see that there are lots of questions in the chat, and that's fantastic. We don't want you to think we're ignoring you, so we're collecting them, and we'll be answering questions at the end of the presentation. Some of your questions we're planning to answer, which is why we'll try and get through it first. So some of the questions that we'll answer today are about timing, about what changes we plan to make, both to your units and to the exterior of the site, and also what we're going to be doing for health and safety. And as I said before, this is just the first town hall, so this is more of an overview. And then we'll be able to dig in on some of these specific topics in future town halls. So next slide. I'll turn it back to Chuck to talk about the construction timeline.
I'm actually gonna take-
Oh, sorry, to Ellie.
That's okay. Hi, everyone. Ellie Himmelsen with L&amp;M Builders. I work with Chuck on the construction side. And the key to when the construction is going to begin is basically two words. It's going to be patience and your cooperation. Patience in the sense that the construction won't start until the summer of 2021, so summer of next year. And cooperation, basically, we need all of the tenants' cooperation in order to still meet that timeframe. So if you look on the screen, you can see that we're actually going to start the in-unit inspections as early as next week. Some of you have already received notifications. And we understand that everyone has commitments, whether it's work or school or taking care of family or health issues, whatever it might be. But if at all possible, if you can give us your cooperation and provide access to the consultants who are going to come into the apartments, that will help keep us on schedule. There are a lot of units at the development, and basically we'll need access to every single one of them. So the consultants are going to come in. They're going to check your apartments for existing conditions. And as the winter progresses, as we get closer to the middle of January, we're going to bring in some contractors to address some of the emergency repairs that have to take place in your apartment. These should, there's no reason why it should wait until we start the construction. We want to jump on this. So if you have peeling paint or some plumbing issues, if you have an outlet that doesn't work, if you have a missing light fixture, we're going to go in, once we've completed our surveys and finding out what needs to be done, we're going to go in and do that immediate work. And then again, like I said, the construction will actually begin in the summer. I'm just going to quickly touch upon the hiring and training. We're going to talk a lot more about that at future meetings. But basically, when there's construction, there's opportunity. And we're very excited, as Chuck mentioned, to see if we can hire people locally from the community to get them involved in this process. And that requires some training, whether it's OSHA training or whatever it manifests itself to be. We'll keep everyone posted about this, and we're very excited to get started again immediately with the inspections and then the actual construction to follow next year. We can jump to the next slide. So why is the construction happening? I think this is pretty obvious to anyone who lives in the property. It is a great property, but there are also a lot of needs, whether you have a leaky roof or you have systemic plumbing issues that have been in your apartment. It can be cosmetic issues, like you've lived at the development for 15, 20 years, and you don't have a new appliance. So there's a lot of work to do, and NYCHA and the developer have tasked us with this work. And as Chuck mentioned, we're very excited to get started. And again, the key here is going to be your cooperation to allowing us to access your units in these early inspections to see exactly what needs to be done. We've done this work before, so there's some cookie-cutter work that, you know, all properties need. But every development is unique, and there are some things unique to Harlem River, which we're figuring out with all the design consultants who the developer has hired, our consultants, our engineers. And getting access will help us define that scope. Something, I think that's over to Mike.
Apologies, I had a little trouble unmuting there. So this is Michael Prush again. CNC will become the property manager come the summer of 2021. The exact date is still being discussed right now. NYCHA will continue to own all of the buildings and the land. Residents in good standing, and I know that this is certainly, I actually was reviewing the chat, and I saw a couple of questions there. Residents that remain in good standing, meaning that they are pretty much caught up with rent, will not be displaced, they will not be evicted. We will not pursue legal action or legal proceedings before, during, or after the construction. That is how we conduct business. And as I said earlier, 90% of our portfolio is affordable housing. We understand that people have unique situations. They have a number of variables and situations that they find themselves in that could be short-term issues, they could be long-term issues that impact their financial situation. Our goal is to work with families, to work with households. That is first and foremost. An eviction process, a legal proceeding, is not the first step ever with our company. That is just not how we approach managing properties of this scale and trying to build a rapport, build a relationship with stakeholders, which we also consider the residents being stakeholders. This is your home. So we're certainly, and again, I can't be any more clear than saying, there is no plan and there is no intent to displace any resident, any occupant of Harlem River. With that being said, we understand that, you know, again, looking at some of the chat here, that there are some potential bad actors at the building, some folks who are not doing the right thing, who disrupt the lifestyle and the quality of life for a lot of residents that live there. We see them at every building, every property in the nation, in the world. We understand too that the overwhelming majority of residents living at a building are good people. So we focus a great deal of energy and resources on trying to change that behavior and make sure that no one is, you know, essentially ruining the quality of life for other residents that live there. And we do pursue that, and we do work with the families to try to stop that negative behavior. On the topic of rent, because I know that that is also a huge concern, especially as, you know, the previous slide, and Ellie had mentioned, we're doing a substantial renovation at this development. The first thing that comes up is, well, how are we going to pay for it? And certainly, does that impact residents? And a resident's going to have to pay for those upgrades. The rent will be set at 30% of household income, the gross household income. And that's going to start the summer of 2021. If you pay the flat rent now, meaning you are 236 or cash-paying resident, your new rent will be phased in over a five-year period. Again, the idea is to preserve the affordability for all residents and every occupant living at Harlem River. And if there is, when there is a rent increase, if there is a rent increase, certainly even in the future, we phase those rent increases in for folks that have those significant rental hardships, if they're unsubsidized. If they do have a subsidy and they're eligible for a subsidy, the tenant portion, the resident and household portion of the rent will be based on 30% of their gross adjusted income. And the balance of that will be picked up by a subsidy.
Sorry. Okay, so this is the exciting stuff. There have been a whole bunch of questions in the chat about what work we're going to do or what you should expect. And I think you know what you should expect. You should expect to live in an environment that's safe, that's healthy, that's in good repair. And those are the things that we are going to address. I'll run through some of this, but I would just make the key point that if there's one thing we've learned over the years, it's pretty obvious, the buildings don't talk. So the tenants tend to be our best source of information. So whether it's by participating in tonight's meeting or in the chat, or as you see us walking around onsite, or the phone numbers and the emails that are available to you, please reach out, let us know what the issues are so we can develop the best scope and get the property in the best shape possible. So, and we have a slide to follow in a moment, which will show you a photo. But just a quick run-through of the basic work that we're going to be doing. We're going to be going into everyone's apartments and basically completely renovating your kitchen and bathrooms. That's new countertops, new appliances, new flooring, new lighting, new windows, new window treatments, excuse me. There are a lot of systemic plumbing issues in the building and electrical issues. These will be addressed. Any lead paint, which I understand is a potential issue, we will be investigating that and resolving it. Any heating issues that you have in your apartment, sometimes there's too much heat. Sometimes there's not enough, not enough hot water. This is all going to be stabilized with new heating systems. We're going to replace all the roofs, which is going to make the buildings more efficient. We're going to add insulation to make them more comfortable, no leaks. Security, I saw that that was a question in the chat. The property is great, but adding cameras can only help. We plan on adding cameras along the exteriors of the building, in the stairwells. Plenty of nice LED lighting, maintaining the fabric that's already there, but actually having working lighting so that all the paths throughout the property are well-lit. And then the hallways themselves, we've walked the hallways. Our staff, as we distribute notices, some lights are on, some are off. None of the hallways should be dimly lit, they should be well-lit. It's safer that way. Along the exterior, this is, not only are we excited, but all of the consultants are very excited to be working on this project. It is from the playground and the building of Harlem River 2 to the actual site of Harlem River 1, it's an incredible footprint. It has seen a lot of wear and tear. So you have a lot of, the old cobblestone paths are tough to walk on. You have a lot of asphalt repairs, broken concrete. All of this is going to be addressed to obviously make it a safer environment to walk in, and it'll also just be uniform and a more beautiful property. We're going to be adding play equipment at the sunken playground areas. We're going to be replacing equipment and equipment where there isn't any currently. And that's at both Harlem River 1 and 2. And like I mentioned, you are, this is great. There are 122 people participating in the call right now. You are our best source of information. So when you see us, whether it's tonight or you see us onsite, please let us know what the issues are so we can plan on addressing them. Thank you.
And you'll be able to identify us. Everyone from our team will be wearing an orange safety vest as Harlem River Preservation on the back. So, you know, when you see us walking around, yeah, feel free to speak to us, and we'll engage with you.
And then this is just a quick snapshot of a project that Chuck and I actually just finished. It was Baychester and Murphy Houses. We've gotten great feedback from your Tenant Association. They've visited, some of them have visited the property and shared with us great information about Harlem River. But you can see in the picture on the left was written, you know, before, right was after. This basically took five to six days in the unit where we replaced the flooring, the windows in the background. You can see the new blinds, new stone countertops, which tenants were very excited about. New sinks, new stainless steel appliances, you can't see the fridge here. New cabinets, obviously. We introduced range hoods, which we plan on doing here as well for better ventilation in the unit. New LED lighting. The finishes won't be exactly the same, but it's a variation on a theme. So this is a decent representation of the work that we'll be doing in the kitchens. And the bathrooms are similar in terms of the timing, that we'd be looking for approximately a week of your time to get access to the unit to complete our scope.
Great, thank you. So in terms of what you should expect in the next few months, many people may have already received a written notice about inspections that will be happening in the next week or two. We will be contacting you with written notices to schedule a time to inspect your unit. If you're not available at that time, please contact us. There will be information about how to do so, and we'll work with you to find a time that does work for you. When the consultant arrives, Ellie mentioned that they'll be wearing a badge, and they will also tell you exactly what to expect from that inspection. Some of the inspections may last 15 minutes, others could take closer to three hours. And they will let you know when they arrive so that you can make plans. You'll also see us working in common areas. Our staff will also be wearing face coverings and eye protection. We're going to ask that you do the same because of COVID and the pandemic. And it's really important that we keep everyone safe. Basically, just to be clear, we're seeing a lot of questions in the chat about problems that are existing right now. So part of the point of this conversion is that you're not going to be facing these issues in the future. But I want to be really clear that we are not going to be responsible and taking over as property management until next summer. Next summer of 2021 is when the construction's going to start, and it's when CNC is going to become the new property manager. So if you have any issues in the meantime, I'm seeing things in the chat about rodents and security concerns and things like that. NYCHA is still managing the property, and so you need to contact them. Please also feel free to let us know if it's something that we need to make sure to take into account as we're planning the changes that we're going to make. But in the meantime, just want to make sure that you know that NYCHA is still in charge. In early 2021, we'll be contacting you to sign a lease. And we'll also be working with legal services so that there will be legal services available if you have any questions or need help with the lease process. We're going to be doing these sort of Zoom town halls every four to six weeks until we can start doing them in person, hopefully someday. But in the meantime, we'll be on Zoom. And if you have any questions or concerns about anything that we're planning, we really encourage you to reach out to us. Your voices are just so important, and we want to hear from you. So we'll be available during all of this time. I'll turn it over now to West Harlem Group Assistance to Christina to talk about health and safety.
Christina's muted. Sorry. Many of you, you may have all received this COVID safety plan. We both mailed it out, as well as distributed on the property and delivered to each of your doors. And we can also, anybody that doesn't have it, we can also send you an electronic copy after this meeting and, you know, anytime you may need it. But essentially, the state and the city came together and talked about what safety plans we can put together to keep each other safe. And so the COVID safety reopening plan sort of spells out how we're going to keep each other safe through that process. Basically, the plan just says that when we're working in your home, as Judy mentioned, we agree to wear face masks, proper protective equipment, which the staff has to wear anyway, but that now includes a face mask. We also ask that you and your family wear one. If you don't have one, we can have one provided for each member of your household. We also are going to agree to both keep a safe distance when we're in your home, six feet. And one of the things, one that we're providing, and we will let you all know when they're available, are hospitality units. There are some cases where residents simply cannot be around dust, you know, loud noise. They may have a nursing baby, these kinds of things. And we're doing our best to plan for having units available for you to use. You don't sleep there, but it's your opportunity to be away in a quiet, vacant, temporarily furnished, you know, with basic amenities available to you. It's a quiet space away from where you are. We obviously want you to be home when the construction is happening. So we'll make every effort to accommodate you inside the home. But where you cannot, if you have asthma, these kinds of things that you're concerned about, we are preparing units for you to be available. We will certainly let you know when they're available. And when the time comes, you'll reserve them ahead. You can call us a week ahead, and we'll reserve the units for you. And they'll essentially be first come, first served. But we are making every effort to make it available to all residents at their convenience. Oh, and so, one of the other most important things of the COVID safety reopening plan is many of you, and thank you very much if you haven't, there was a, you probably cannot see this, but it says a Resident Acknowledgement Consent Form. The things that I mentioned here are basic- The things that I mentioned here basically says that you agree and you understand how we're going to keep each other safe through the process. We really need those forms signed, your full name, full address and your signature on the form. You can deliver it to the Dropbox. We've set up a Dropbox at the old library site. So the construction office is temporarily using the site of where the old library is. The door is remains the same as you remember it. It's the the New York Public Library Red Door and to the left of the door is a Dropbox. You can feel free, sign it and drop the original there and we'll pick it up. If for any reason you cannot leave your home or you can't get it to us, we also have electronic versions of that form. And you know, we can make an effort to pick it up, but you can send it back electronically and through the Dropbox. This form is extraordinarily important to us because it allows us to be able to come in your home to do the work from inspection on through construction. Without it, no work can happen and we really need your consent. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, continue to ask them here. You can also send an email address, email to us at info@harlemriver.org. I N F O at harlemriver.org. And you can also call us directly at 212-862-1399, extension 2719. And you see any of us, we'll have our badges on or vests, you can feel free to ask us directly. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Anya Rasmam with PSS. So we are going to be, we're a new partner to the project and we're really excited. So we will be providing social services starting next summer to all of the residents of Harlem River. Tell you a little bit about us, we have been around for over 50 years. PSS predominantly serves caregivers in all five boroughs and we have 10 senior centers, three of which are in Harlem and seven in the Bronx. And we also do a variety of other programs, but what you guys are most interested in, I'm sure, is the survey that we will be conducting, so you will be hearing from us soon. And that is going to be a needs assessment. So basically, this is the opportunity for us to hear what kinds of, you know, needs there are in the community in your development that you would like for us to to be thinking about. So that when we start, we are ready with with plans for that. So some examples, we will have a social worker onsite. We will provide, you know, things like screenings for benefits entitlements, you know, nutrition, depression. We will, we're planning to have different types of classes, come techno, technology classes, health and fitness. You know, support for basically everybody of all ages, but it's, you know, we would love to hear from you what exactly is needed. In the meantime, we do have what's called PSS Life University, which is virtual programming and that's open to everybody. So I encourage you to check out our websites, learn more about us. You can contact us directly there or as Christina mentioned, through the Harlem River email. And if you're anybody who's interested, the university is open and so please feel free to participate and join some of our workshops that are already happening.
Thank you, Anya.
Just to, you know, just to make sure that you have the contact information that we have, I just want to make sure I read it out again here. We want you to stay in touch with us. So each of these meetings and all of the notices, the things that we want you to know, we have also designed a website for you. It's www.harlemriver.org. You can go there and visit and it'll contain all of the things that we discussed here. And you can also, again, feel free, we encourage, we want you to send us your emails. Email at info, I N F O at harlemriver.org. And you can also call us directly 212-862-1399, extension 2719. We want your feedback, please continue to send them, no question is off limits, we are here for you. Thank you.
Great. So I think the moment, the reason that most of you joined is to be able to go through the questions and answers. We're about to open for Q and A. The way we're going to do it is Ayana Oliver Taylor, who has been collecting all of the questions throughout, is going to read questions and direct them to the right people. There will also be opportunities for people to ask questions out loud, both in the English room and in the Spanish and Mandarin and Haitian Creole rooms. So there will be pauses when we switch to each of the other languages, but we want to make sure to be able to do it simultaneously for everyone. I know that we've discussed a lot of important topics very briefly and kind of have given you a little bit of a taste of some of these things, but that we're going to really need to dig in. So we will be having another town hall in January to focus on the physical changes that we're planning. And then another one a few weeks later to go through the rest of it. So one will be about the changes to your apartments and one will be about the changes to the exterior. And we'll also make sure a lot of the other topics we've talked about in terms of hiring and training and leases and rents. But we do want to make sure to answer all of the pressing questions now. If you have a question that is specific to your unit or to your precise situation and is not going to be of general interest, then we ask that you don't ask it right now in front of everyone and that you instead contact us by email or telephone tomorrow or whenever you're available and have time and we'll answer it. But if you do have a question that's general interest, we really encourage you to ask it. If, once we get to the verbal portion, if you're on Zoom, then you can click raise hand and we'll be able to call on you and then we'll give instructions at each point for how we're going to do the Q and A. As a little bit of just kind of the top level issues, we're really excited to be working with you. We see you, the residents, have the most important information and you are the really important partner in this deal and this project and our ability to make it a success. We're going to be planning from now until the summer of 2021, which will include onsite inspections and working with you and as Ellie said, we'll definitely need your cooperation and your patience and we really appreciate that. The, the, and then once we take over, there's a lot that will be the same. Your rents will still be at 30% unless you're on flat rent and then there will be the phase in which Mike mentioned. But in general, rents will be at 30% of your income. NITSHA is still going to own the land and then there's going to be a lot of changes too. So I think with that, I'll turn it over to Ayana to start asking all of the questions that we've got and please keep the questions coming.
Thank you, Judy. So hi, everyone, I'm Ayana and I'm looking forward to reading through all of the questions that we've received in the chat thus far. So starting at the beginning, we received a question from Tanel Bithia. I apologize if I'm saying anyone's name incorrectly. But Tanel asked, will the team be upgrading the two playgrounds and the sprinklers where the kids play? I will turn this over to Ellie.
Yeah, the plan is definitely to upgrade the playground areas. I know by one of the sunken playgrounds right now, there's no equipment. And some of the equipment that's onsite dates back probably at least 15 years, 20 years. So it's still under design, but the 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 plan is definitely to introduce some exciting new playscapes.
Thank you. And I, we received another question from Carol. What is the name of the contractor company that will be working on the development and where will the hospitality suites be? Judy?
So the contractor is L and M Builders and that's who Ellie and Chuck are here from, along with a lot of other people. The hospitality suites are going to be vacant units at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River two. We're still working out exactly which units they will be and we'll be letting you know when, you know, we get closer to that point.
Thank you. Carol are asked, how long will each room take to complete? That's Ellie.
So we're still finalizing the scope, but basically you're looking at a week for the bathroom and an additional week for the kitchen. And the work will be phased, it won't be a consecutive two weeks of work. And then we'll have to come back, we're going to try and do some of this work concurrently, but there's also painting in your apartment and replacing all of the flooring. So it's a, it's a lot of work in the unit. The finished product is great, the process, the process is construction. It's, it's, it's a joint, a joint effort between your patience and understanding and our bringing in qualified, qualified crews who have done this over thousands of units. The emphasis is this is your home. So we come in, we work clean, they are very respectful and if a mistake is made, we correct it immediately. So we have great supervision onsite, great supers and we try and keep or not try, we keep to that schedule, you know, that week for the bathroom and the week for the kitchen.
Thank you, Ellie. Sean Franklin asked, who is going to hold the contractors and CNC accountable for their actions or lack thereof? I'm going to direct this question to Kyle from NITSHA.
Thank you, great question. So after conversion, NITSHA still retains ownership oversight over the, over Harlem River Preservation and CNC after the conversion. So we will be monitoring to ensure they're fulfilling their obligations to you, the residents. It's important to note though that this team was selected after a competitive public procurement process and we are confident that they will take their obligations to you very seriously.
Thank you, Kyle. Kim asked if we can describe how security will be built into the renewed infrastructure, how crime, litter, destruction of property, drug-related activity and other criminal activity will be handled and eradicated. The criteria that determines whether, there are a host of questions. So I think maybe what I'll do is just break that out and direct the first question related to how security will be built into the infrastructure to Ellie from Builders.
So this scope is developed and I guess like a two-pronged approach. One, we bring in a consultant who has experience on the dealing with security cameras and intercom systems and access control to to the buildings as well as CNC in there managing so many units and having an on-staff entire security department, which is former NYPD professionals who bring a lot to the table with understanding the needs of the property, the the concerns in the area, whatever they might be specific to this property. And that helps inform what we're doing. So the basic plan is certainly to introduce a lot more cameras and create access control to the to the unit. So instead of, for example, having a key to access all the, all the entrances at Harlem River, Harlem River one, you would have a key fob. And that's, that allows access to be controlled and maintained a lot more securely. And I know Mike can speak very clearly to what what we do on these properties in terms of security.
Sure. Do you want me to continue off of that, Ayana, or would you like to, is there another part of, another part to the question?
No, there's a, there's a through line there, so I think if you sort of elaborate and then you can also discuss how crime, litter, destruction of property, drug, activity and the like will be addressed.
So as I said a little earlier, that, you know, it's been our experience in doing this for for many decades on tens of thousands of units, that the majority of people living at developments are good people. And they want to live there peacefully and enjoy everything and they want to be proud of where they live and have family and friends over to visit and be, you know, with with no concerns and no fear. But we do understand that there are always those very small, you know, minority group percentage wise of people that are bad actors. And when it comes down to that, we do pursue that very aggressively. But the way that we pursue it aggressively is in the sense of immediate intervention. It's not about really engaging that household or that individual or that non-resident or guest who might have defaced property or damaged something or who's dealing drugs or who's doing some other illegal activity. The goal is to essentially use that information that we pull from CCTV cameras, work with local law enforcement, which as Ellie had mentioned earlier, we have a very robust security division within our court, within our company. These are all former law enforcement professionals, both local law enforcement, that that would include New York and also even at the federal level. So they have a lot of contacts and they know how to work with people to change the behavior essentially. Again, we don't want to, you know, go down a legal process of removing someone from their unit, from their home because there's one occupant in the household who's the problem and causes a problem at the property, damages the property or is a nuisance to other people living at the property. We work with those households to essentially try to come to some type of resolution. And the resolution might be holding them accountable. If someone in their household, you know, destroys something at the building, the, you know, one particular opportunity that exists is, well, look, this is, this household's now on on some type of probation. And that's, that's kind of a warning. Then we could certainly escalate and continue from there, but again, this is not stuff we want to do. And what we've actually seen surprisingly, and it's, you know, these are just words I'm saying to, I'm sure, many of you, but it does actually come together and we've seen this on every single preservation deal. Once we start injecting, you know, some improvements into this property, long-awaited, long-needed improvements, we've actually seen residents speak up to their neighbors or to, you know, a young man, young woman living at that, at that building saying, hey, you're not going to graffiti on my hallways anymore. I'm proud of where I live, this is a beautiful building now. So we actually see people take, there's an increase in ownership. It changes the whole culture at the building in the sense where people are proud of where they live and they want to protect it. And they're not going to allow their children or other occupants or their guests to enter the property and deface it and destroy it. We've seen that and it is a remarkable difference that we see very quickly, actually. But we will have dedicated security resources onsite 24 hours a day, seven days a week, holidays, late at night, weekends, you name it. We have dedicated resources aligned for Harlem River. That would be a dedicated director of security onsite, multiple tour commanders and a host of additional security resources in the local area that will all play a very, very impactful and busy role at Harlem River.
Thanks. Thank you. And so just sort of further elaborating on the transformation with CNC, can you also address how soon residents can expect emergency repairs to commence? And what does the development team consider an emergency repair?
So an emergency repair is certainly, I mean, we could start there. The emergency repair in many normal definitions would relate to fire, flood or potential loss of life and limb. Okay, that would be if there is a smoke detector that's going off or it's beeping and it's not, or it's not working, that can be considered a, an emergency repair. There were gas ranges, a failing or inoperable smoke, carbon monoxide detector. No running water or a pipe break or a leak or a toilet that does not flush, a sink that does not work. Those are just a few of the potential items that are emergency repairs. However, there are also unique needs within every unit. We understand there are some residents that have certain medical conditions and perhaps even mobility issues and they really, what might not be an emergency repair to, as an industry standard, it could be very clear to us that that is an emergency repair, that they, we would mobilize a crew after hours, on weekends, at any point in time to support that household and do what we have to do to restore a little normalcy at that unit. In terms of the timing, again, you know, NITSHA is more or less involved on the day-to-day and is overseeing the property until CNC apartment management officially transitions into the property. That would be sometime in summer of 2021. So between now and then, NITSHA, please, I would continue and encourage you to direct your order request to NITSHA. However, we are also going to be very involved with what are called housing quality inspections or HQS inspections. These inspections are something that I believe most Harlem River residents are very familiar with. They're usually performed annually, but we are going in with, we are going to coordinate dates, times and a schedule with all the residents. with all the residents, most of the residents at Harlem River, to essentially inspect your unit, look for those quality of life issues, inoperable appliances, holes in walls, doors that are falling off of tracks, just all issues that the, that HUD, really, the Housing Urban Development, would dictate as this unit is not habitable, it's not fit to live in. And I will, I could then defer to Ellie a little bit on the builder's side, who could speak to what the next steps are there. But the goal is to restore these units and bring them to a high level of housing quality. And that's before the summer of 2021.
Thanks, Mike. Ellie, did you want to further elaborate? Okay, understood.
Ayana, can you check to see if any of the translators have questions from those residents?
Sure. Are there, I guess we can take a pause to do translation. Should we start with Spanish questions?
Allow me a second. I'm inquiring in the line.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe go to the next one until they're ready, maybe.
It seems that there's no questions in the Spanish line right now.
What about the Mandarin or Haitian Creole lines? And Christina, I just wanted to give them a chance to ask the question before we move on so that they don't miss translations.
Definitely. Thank you.
Yes, there are questions on both. The interpreters are just collecting the information.
Sam, can you please unmute Emmanuel Jean-Philippe? There's a question in the Haitian Creole line and he can't unmute.
Emmanuel, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Okay, hi, this is Emmanuel Jean-Philippe, Haitian Creole interpreter. Okay, I'm going to ask her to repeat her question. Okay. Okay, o met ma de question, madame? Yes, I can hear you. Oui, metandou. The question is, is there a place where you can send us the residents during the day because of the dust that will be in the air in the area while the construction and work is being done?
I can start this answer. Thank you. There's going to be two different phases. So while we're doing inspections, there will be the hospitality suites that Christina mentioned earlier. We expect people to need them on a much more limited basis because the inspections will be brief. And during construction, when we actually get started, then we'll also be working with residents who need to be relocated during the construction period. And that will be a different conversation based on the resident needs. So in both cases, if someone needs to be out of their apartment, we will work with you to make an accommodation. Does anyone else from our team want to jump in on that question?
Yes, excuse me, there's one question from the Mandarin line. The question is, will the rent increase because a lot of the money is, will be spent on renovation, the housing?
It's a great question. In short, no. Residents are going to continue to pay 30% of your income on your rent. And then the additional funds are going to come from the project-based Section 8 funding. So the way that we're able to fund all of these improvements is through the conversion from public housing to, through the RAD program. And so because we're nonprofit organizations and this is not going to be operated by NICA, we'll be able to get private bank financing in order to support these improvements. So your rents, if you are on flat rent, then you will phase into 30% of your income over five years. And if you are paying 30% of your income, then that will be the same. Doreen? Sure, thank you. Doreen, did I get that right? Is there anything you wanted to clarify?
No, you got that absolutely correct.
Great, thank you.
Were there any other questions on the Spanish Mandarin or Haitian Creole lines? Okay. So Carol asked about tenant storage and the provision for tenant storage and whether or not tenants will pay for that. Judy, do you want to address that?
Sure. We'll work with people while we're doing the construction to make arrangements for whatever your belongings are and what we need to do. And that's something that we will work with you on. Ellie, can you jump in and talk about how you've handled it on other projects?
Sure. So if you were talking about just short-term storage and not long-term storage, then basically when we come into the apartments and replace the floors, we will take care of moving any couches, any belongings in the apartment to facilitate that work. Same thing with the painting. If something has to be moved away from the wall in order to paint, we'll do that. Someone else asked earlier, the level of finish on the paint. Do we just paint over years of paint or do we sand down walls? That's a great question. It's kind of a combination. We don't want to create too much dust in the apartment by sanding down. We could potentially do that if the apartment was vacant. But in occupied apartments, that actually gets a little dangerous with all the dust. So we try and remove any snots and bumps, to use the technical term. So you do have an improved finish on the painting. The day that we come in to the bathrooms and the kitchens, we're going to distribute the week before bins with the assistance of management. And we would just ask that you empty out everything from your cabinets, your pantry, any toiletries from your bathroom, so we can facilitate the demo and get the work done. For any tenant who has, who needs assistance doing this, it's not an issue. We'll help get it done. Someone else, just a quick answer, someone asked if we remove the carpet. If we're redoing the floors, the answer would be yes. We plan on replacing the exterior doors. That was also a question in terms of, that'll be part of our overall security scope. Someone also asked about the bedrooms. Our scope there will be to paint, to replace the flooring. And if there's any lighting sconces, we'll replace those as well. If there are damaged doors, any bedroom doors, those will be replaced. And I think last but not least, just very quickly, in terms of dust control, dust is a very serious no-no in construction. We're required by the Department of Buildings to file a dust and noise mitigation plan. So we put up plastic protection. We have ventilators, ventilation in the apartment, venting dust out of the apartment. We have a ton of measures that we take to limit the amount of dust that's raised, that it stays in the area that we're working and does not move throughout the apartment. We are very, very careful about dust.
Thank you, Ellie. Sean Franklin sent two questions to me privately, so I'll read those. Will the people who already have a parking permit still be able to park in the lot near the rent office? Judy, do you want to address that?
Sure. So I think we're talking about the lot on 151st Street. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Near the current management office. So we'll need to look into it and get back to you. But in short, that is unfortunately not a legal lot. And so we're not going to be able to continue operating it as parking. So to the extent that there are any permit holders for that specific lot, will both us and NICA will need to work with you to make arrangements because that lot will not be able to continue to be a parking lot.
And Sean asked also, related to parking, will there be a discussion of turning the closed street between Adam Clayton Powell and McCombs Place into a parking lot for residents?
We're looking into whether we can turn that into parking. And because we are losing the other lot, it's something that we're looking at. I don't know that there's going to be parking there for residents, but we understand that parking is a really important issue for people and it's something we're looking at. And by the time that we go through the exterior plans with you, we will have answers. I don't know that it's going to be an answer that's going to make everyone happy, but it's, we certainly understand the importance and it's something we're looking at.
Thanks, Judy. Sure. So Cheryl asked a question and I'm going to kick it back to Kyle. He answered this earlier. But so does the development team now own the buildings?
This is Kyle. Great question. NICA continues to own the buildings and the land after conversion.
Thanks, Kyle. Non-Franklin also asked, will the fees for air conditioners, deep freezers and washing machines stay the same or will they be raised and will they continue to be allowed? Mike or Doreen, do you guys want to take this?
Sure. So generally speaking, when it comes to any additional appliances, what we do see are that there are additional fees associated with it because it's just an increased draw on electric demand at the building. I think we still have to discuss this internally to figure out, you know, essentially what the business plan will be on that. Again, if there is any charge, it would likely be very nominal because the electrical draw on any of those types of appliances is generally pretty low. So I think there's a little bit more to discuss internally about that overall approach. But again, excellent question and we'll certainly be back in touch with you on that.
Harmon asked, will tenants have options to choose interior builds for their apartments? Ellie, do you want to discuss how you've approached this on other projects?
Our interior what?
Builds. So I imagine Harmon's asking related to finishes and countertops and appliances and the like.
Judy, can I punt this to you or to Sam?
Sure. Yeah, I can take it. Basically, we are going to be working on a set of finishes and what the flooring and cabinets and counters and appliances and all of that's going to look like. And that's what we will be presenting to you on the next Town Hall meeting. We're also working with your very excellent Resident Association Board and are talking with them and getting their feedback to help us as we put together what we're going to propose to you. So we're going to try and pick things with you, with your feedback that are crowd-pleasing and that, you know, look really nice and that everyone's going to feel good about. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do individual tenant-by-tenant picking finishes because that would be really impractical and hard for us to implement and also problematic if someone chooses to move out. So we're not going to be able to do it on an individual level. It'll be at the development level. But we really, really want your feedback to make sure that the decisions we're making are going to make most, if not everyone, happy. And then if there are individual case-by-case issues, of course, we'd want to work with you on them if there's some reason why. Maybe we can take a moment, Ayana, and do some voice questions and then come back to the chat. Just want to, I know that we have some more time scheduled, but want to make sure. So I think we'll do a few questions by voice, but we also have a lot of questions coming in on the chat. So what do you think? How about two or three voice questions and then we'll switch over? So to ask a voice question, you can click the raise hand and we'll be able to unmute you. I see, sorry, Ayana, are you going to call them or do you want me to?
No, it's okay. I can call. Kim raised their hand.
Thank you. I just want to go back maybe to Kyle because for some of us, I hate to say this, I hear what you're saying, that NICA will still own the land. But I need you to please explain, what does that mean? How does NICA being the ownership of it differentiate itself from, you know, LMN and CNC and, you know, the property managers and all of that specifically?
So I'm going to pass this over to my colleague, Marissa Schaffer, to answer that question.
Hi, thanks for that question. This is Marissa Schaffer. So I, it's a good question. So how this will work is that, as Kyle said, NICA will continue to own the land and the buildings and we will lease it to Harlem River Preservation and their property management team as well. There are a number of legal documents, transaction documents. The general templates of those are on NICA's PACT website, where we have different mechanisms to hold our PACT developers accountable while they're, you know, taking over the management of the property. So we have oversight, as Kyle mentioned. We monitor what they're doing, we monitor the construction and the ongoing property management. So, but we retain ultimately, like Kyle said, the ownership of the land and the buildings. If for some reason we don't expect this to happen, of course, something went, you know, Harlem River Preservation wasn't fulfilling their obligations, NICA has the ability to take back the property and it becomes, comes back to full NICA ownership. So hopefully that answers your question. I'm happy to answer any follow-ups.
Thanks. Thanks, Marissa. We have another question from a few numbers. I'm going to read out the number and if it's yours, please.
Ayana, hold on one second. This is Sam. Kim, I think that was asking the question. I'm not sure if you have a follow-up, but I saw your, the hand go up again.
I saw the number.
I think that was a thumbs up, Sam.
Oh, thumbs up. Okay, great. I'm sorry, Ayana, please continue.
Yeah, no problem. So 646-491-553. Or actually, it looks like we unmuted 347.
Yes. I'm here.
Sorry, do you want to?
Hello?
Hi, do you want to ask your question?
Yes, I would like to ask a question as far as overcrowdedness on the residents that are in apartments that are extreme, you know, have extreme overcrowdedness. What will you do as far as transitioning them, residents, into getting the apartments to accommodate their family size?
Judy, do you want to take that one?
Sure. So in the meantime, if you're on the transfer list at NICA, then that will still apply. And I'm sure NICA is going to continue working through the transfer list. Once we take over, we'll be working with households to do right sizing as units become vacant. So we'll be able to move you to other units within the development based on the correct family size for a number of bedrooms. I wish we had a faster solution. I know that it's going to take time for there to be vacancies and that there will be a lot of demand. But we'll do our best to accommodate people.
Thank you.
We have another phone number. Sam, do you want to unmute?
Hello?
Yes, hi, sir.
Hello?
Hi.
How you doing? Listen, I'm trying, okay, so I'm listening to everything that seems to be going on. I'm just trying to understand something. A couple of weeks back, I seen a guy had a bed and a nightlight and he had it made, he had it made up on the roof landing in one of the buildings. Now, I get it. Management knows their place by staying in that office and not looking around to see what kind of real problems exist. So what's different behind Harlem River Preservation and the fact that you might And the fact that you might actually have a real crisis in this development? Like safety, you know, like everybody seems to have a key to all of the front doors. Doors stay open. I mean, so aside from the fact that they're bringing management in to count the money, which is pretty much the way that you start with signing new leases, you know, starting from ground zero, what about that issue? How do you make people safe?
Ayana, do you want me to speak to that?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Mike.
So again, another excellent question. I would like to use some examples without necessarily scaring anyone, but we have acquired and we've also managed some very, very serious properties with very serious criminal activity and nuisance issues going on at the buildings. Some of these buildings were larger, 1,100 units, 700 units, you know, in that realm. So they're definitely the same size and magnitude. These are buildings that when we first acquired it, didn't have, all the roofs were connected. So you could enter one exit, one entrance of the building. You could walk up the stair landing and you could disappear and walk across the roof and disappear somewhere else, somewhere else on site. Large campus properties, so it's very easy to, again, disappear if you were up to no good or if you were creating a nuisance for other people living there. Doors that didn't lock, none of the doors locked. And there were over 175 exits and entrances on this property. So you could imagine that it was essentially a free for all. No access controls, no security cameras and very short staff. And that was a prob, that was just one example of many that we acquired and we were brought in to manage. And those properties were all immediately secured. The cameras were put in and now with cameras, you're able to essentially track and see. We don't like to focus on Big Brother, but if we're seeing that someone to face his property, we're going to reel back our cameras, we're going to find out who did it. And we're going to start addressing and speaking to that household. We're going to find out with access control and key fobs, it makes it a little easier to pinpoint who the bad actor was. And then it kind of turns into either probationary period where they're not allowed on the property for a period of time. You know, there's a very significant number of variables that come into play and certain things that we could exercise to essentially change the behavior at the property and hold people accountable. We want the property to be safe and it'll quickly be known that that bad behavior is not tolerated. So we have an extreme amount of experience because of our size and how long we've been doing this and how many properties we've done at similar size and even much larger, where we have completely addressed the criminal situation to now these are some of the safest properties in their respective regions, boroughs, towns. It's a major turnaround.
Thank you, Mike. It looks like Charlene has their hand raised and so we're going to go to that question and then I will go back to the translation rooms and ask the Spanish, Mandarin and Haitian Creole folks if they have a, if they have questions. So Charlene, do you want to ask your question? Charlene, are you on mute?
Yeah, Charlene, you need to unmute yourself. We can't unmute for you. So there's a button.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was on mute.
You can hear you now.
Okay. I've been notified by certain people that have worked here and some of them have retired that this property that we're sitting on right here in Harlem River is prime real estate. Besides it being a monument, residential monument in the area and that Citibank is in cohorts with NYCHA over this property. So that even though we have these representatives that are coming in and fixing the problems that we have, I don't, I don't feel like it's been clear enough stated that this is not, this landmark is not going to be for us after all these renovations are done. You understand my question?
Yes. Thank you, Charlene. I'm going to direct this to Kyle from NYCHA to discuss the sort of groundly structure with Charlene.
Actually, let me just jump in. I don't, I think the question was more about preserving the landmark status of the property. Charlene, you can, this is Marissa from NYCHA. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, it's not, it's not about it being a landmark. Everyone knows it's a landmark. Is it, has Citibank bought into this landmark along with NYCHA? In a profitable situation, like if Citibank is only, has ownership along with NYCHA for this property?
No, Citibank does not have, does not have ownership on the property. At the moment, it's just NYCHA. And then at the conversion of the property, the structure that I mentioned earlier will, will come into place. The Harlem River Preservation will be raising financing. I don't believe from Citibank, but we'll be raising financing to fund these renovations. But those lenders will not be owners of the property. Again, NYCHA will continue to own the land and the buildings and we'll lease it to Harlem River Preservation.
Marissa, I think one other thing you can address is that it seems like in the chat, there's a lot of concern that there's going to be displacement or that residents will be pushed out or that there's some kind of plan for that. Can you talk to that?
Sure. Thanks. Thanks Judy.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Because that's the concern of me being moved out of my apartment temporarily so you guys can get this work done in my apartment. My apartment is very damaged for over seven years. And every time somebody would come to my apartment, I'm in 2651 over here on the opposite side of the street from the main part of the complex. They worked on the roof and then all the water came down from the roof and ruined my bedroom, my living room ceilings and my walls in my bedroom. And then, so everyone's known that I had a ticket in there for like years already to come and do the repairs on my apartment and nothing's been done. And I'm just concerned I'm going to have to fight someone, get a lawyer and to protect my rights as a disabled person as well as a tenant that I'm not moving out of this apartment. I just want it repaired. In that situation, there has been, I've seen reports of people in certain areas in New York who were removed from their project and then they never got to come back to their renovated project.
So if that, oh, go ahead.
If I can add, Judy, I think you're along the right line. I actually spoke to Ms. Charlene earlier along with a dozen other residents and it was along the line of, one of the questions I think she's definitely asking is about the security of her home, which she phrased to me earlier and the process of, many of them residents had the question of gentrification on hand that was mentioned. Thank you, Judy. I think you were along the right line.
Thank you.
Can I add one piece to that on the project-based voucher, the Section 8 under the RAD conversion? And now, so this property will convert under RAD and project-based vouchers will be issued to eligible households, which are primarily, you know, a very large majority, not almost everybody. And therefore that is an attempt to essentially preserve the affordability of the development. So it will remain an affordable housing development and not be changed to anything else.
I think maybe Marissa can speak to this just because I think this is something that we always, you always hear about in the news. And we understand why this is so scary. We know you want these changes, but you want to benefit from the changes and be there for them. And it is our team's intent that you will be. And that this is not a plan to displace people. This is a plan to renovate your apartments, bring on new management and keep you there. We want to keep you happy. We want to keep you there. But I don't know if it's compelling coming from me. So I'm wondering if maybe, Marissa, you can reassure people that this is not a plan for displacement.
Absolutely. Thank you, Judy, and thank you for the question, Charlene. That's absolutely right. This RAD and PAC, as we call it in New York, is a plan to preserve the long-term affordability of Harlem River houses. And so absolutely everyone who is eligible, who is a resident of Harlem River houses will be converted to Section 8. NYCHA and have, and retain, you know, their apartment, NYCHA will continue to be involved in addition to the ways I spoke to before as the Section 8 administrator. So NYCHA will remain involved in administering your Section 8 voucher. And I think that we have a representative from our leased housing department. I believe Robert Tesero on the line if there are any specific questions about, about that program. And also I see another question in the chat about rent. And just to be clear, rent is 30% of a household's income. So if your income goes down, your rent, provided you submit the documentation through NYCHA's leased housing department, your rent will adjust accordingly.
Robert, did you?
Yeah, hi. I hope you can hear me and see me. I apologize. I had some difficulties with my equipment here. Could you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, hi. My name is Robert Tesero. I'm director at NYCHA Leased Housing Section 8 Program. Thank you for inviting me here and great questions. And, you know, NYCHA just got finished with another RAD PAC closing this past Monday, so that's number seven. I've been part of all seven and again, I got to tell you, the results are really great. And CNC management, LNM partners for a long time, doing a great job at Baychester Murphy. And again, I do want to reiterate that project-based, okay, is a long-term solution for Harlem River 102. And for the most part, again, no tenant will pay more than 30% of their adjusted gross income. And again, all the deals that we've done under PAC, okay, nobody is being forced out. Again, everyone is going to continue to pay 30%. If you have flat rent, five years, we'll phase it in. But at the end of the day, you're going to have a renovated apartment and you'll be able to stay in your apartment for as long as you'd like. And again, that's something that's really working well under the PAC program. I'll be here for the rest of the evening. Any Section 8 questions? Feel free to ask and I'll be happy to answer for you.
Thank you, Robert. And Marissa, do you mind further elaborating on how the PAC and RAD program via the Section 8 conversion supports the funding of the necessary repairs?
Sure. So this program, the PAC, PAC program is a federal program started by HUD. And like Ayana said, it supports raising these necessary capital repairs by bringing in partners like Harlem River Preservation who can raise the money to do these comprehensive renovations that they're talking with you about tonight and with which they'd like to get your feedback on what you'd like to see at Harlem River. These repairs would not be possible without this program as I think that NYCHA has, in the NYCHA presentations that we've done previously, investment in Section 9, which is the typical conventional public housing funding, the program that Harlem River currently operates under, has not been keeping pace with the needs of NYCHA's developments. So by converting to Section 8 through the PAC RAD program, that is how we are able to leverage the private investment to bring in and really fix up with all the repairs that are needed in your apartments and the buildings while also, as we talked about, preserving the permitted affordability, NYCHA retaining a role through Robert, through Leased Housing Department and then other oversight.
Thank you, Marissa. So I just wanted to circle back to Charlene and make sure that you, you feel like your question was addressed before we move on.
Also, this is Sam from the development team. I also want to emphasize that this is not the only time to ask any of your questions. If you want to ask this question again, if you want more information, we'd love to hear from you. So please do reach out. Our phone number is on the screen right now and our email address is there too. So if you want to keep talking about this, we'd love to hear from you. Please don't hesitate to reach out. Maybe tomorrow, just because I think it'll be a little bit late when we, when we wrap up here, but we really do want to hear from you and are thankful for the question, Char.
Thanks, Sam. So I'm going to, we have a couple of more hands raised. There's a phone number, 347-355-4392. I'm going to ask that you unmute.
Okay, so thank you again. Let me, I'm trying to understand something. I get the whole 30% thing and I get, are we listening? Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, we hear you. Oh, okay. Okay. So I understand the whole 30% thing. And I, you know, and I get it. But if I see the guy across the, if I see the guy across the street who is living in a private building paying 30% and his building is something different. And his building is something different. And I'm living in a NYCHA development across the street where, where if I go out of work tomorrow, I can go to public assistance and they'll give you $215 a month. Why am I paying, why am I paying 30%, which is equal to everybody on the block? When this whole setup is geared towards helping in a sense of affordable housing, where why not 20%? Why not a reasonable 20%? And at a certain, and at a certain salary cap, at a certain salary cap, I understand then, okay, at a certain salary cap, okay, 30%, maybe 25, then work on 30. But why not 20% and then move up? You see, because the only reason all of this is possible is behind one reason, is because everybody is paying through the nose. And not only that, you don't allow for people to have roommates. So at the same time, you're bleeding them out for the rent that they're paying, thinking that you're doing them a favor when people are struggling. All right. And that's, and that's what's going on. I mean, we're looking at it right now through this pandemic. People are struggling. But what's wrong with 20%? Why not, why not the guy living down the block in the condominium? I get why he might be paying 30%. But why not, why not, why not a reasonable salary cap and 20%? That way people get a chance to live. Because right now, everything that you're saying has to do with making more, spending more money. I got one thing. When you guys move in as far as management and repairs need to be made after you seem to be reiterating over how we're going to, we're going to, we're going to do this to the apartment, do this to the apartment, do this to the apartment, that's fine. But all I hear you doing is trying to sell a reason to keep the rent high. What are you going to do to help people besides the fact that you're going to say, oh, we're going to move you someplace else because, you know, you're not, either you're not employed or you, or you know, like, like you said, Section 8. With that Section 8 thing, I'm trying to understand this. If I'm already paying you 1,400, which is what you guys are asking for, for a one-bedroom, and get this, I know people with two bedrooms and they're not even paying 12. But if you're asking for that kind of money, what does Section 8 do to help? How does Section 8 help you from me in the sense that if I'm already paying 1,400, what is Section 8 going to give you for me? That's going to add to that 1,400, making it seem like, making it seem like my 1,400 is some type of a low budget, a low budget type of rent. Like when you say, oh, well, he's only paying 1,400, but Section 8 is going to give us another 1,000 because that apartment really goes for 2,800. See, I'm trying to understand, why push, why are you pushing it like that?
Yeah. So sir, let me jump in there. And again, you raised some valid points and good suggestions, but let me just remind everyone that this is a federally funded program. So just like public housing, Section 8 is also capped at 30% of adjusted gross income for the families. And again, at the same time with Section 8, and you know, the housing authority runs the largest in the world. I mean, we're close to 100,000 now. And again, I have to refer to our past PAC deals where tenants, when they converted, and we just had a conversion on Monday, when they converted, they're still paying the same rent share as they did when they were public housing. Okay. And again, what's the benefit? Well, at the same time, you're paying your 30%. Well, at the same time, you're paying your 30%, you can get a renovated apartment. After one year, okay, you're going to have a choice. You can stay with your beautiful renovated apartment, or you can decide maybe you want to take a tenant-based voucher when one becomes available and move somewhere else throughout the five boroughs and even take it outside of New York City. So there's a lot of benefits with the Section 8 program. It's been around for over 40 years. And I'd be very happy to answer any more questions you have about Section 8 because I think you're a little bit misinformed with some of the misleading information that's out there. But Section 8 is a proven program. It's well-funded. And again, I'm very excited that you guys are going to have the opportunity to become Section 8 in the very near future.
Thanks, Robert. And this is Marissa. I just want to clarify too. Because you're paying a percentage of your income, if your income changes, if you submit the documentation to Robert's department at NICA, your rent will be adjusted. So if, you know, God forbid, you you lose your job or you're, you lose a portion of your income, your rent will be adjusted to reflect 30% of your new income, as long as you submit the documents to NICA's Leased Housing Department.
Correct. Thank you, Marissa.
Thank you, Marissa. And Robert, do you mind just further elaborating on the phase-in of 30%?
Yeah, sure. I mean, again, we all know in public housing, they have what they call flat rents. Okay. And obviously, the flat rents, you're not paying 30%. But under the Section 8 program, everyone pays 30%. That's part of the federal guidelines. But we do understand that folks transferring or converting from public housing to Section 8, that'll be a burden to go right to 30%. So HUD does allow housing authorities throughout the country who's doing RAD conversions to choose either the three-year phase-in or a five-year phase-in. So the housing authority decided the best would be for five years. So at each end review, we will increase your rent gradually until you're paying 30%.
Thank you, Robert. But assuming that someone's at 30% of their income, will they see rent increases every year?
The only time their rent share will go up is if their income goes up. And same thing in public housing. If your income goes up, your rent goes up. If your income goes down, your portion of the rent goes down. So it's all income-based, but no tenant will pay more than 30% towards the rent.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
It looks like Jessica has had her hand raised for a while, so I'm going to ask Jessica to unmute. Jessica's hands no longer raised. So I'm going to go to the translation room now. It looks like there are some questions, I think from the Mandarin room. Is that correct? Are there any questions from the Spanish speaking room?
You unmuted the Haitian Creole interpreter.
No, no questions on the Spanish room.
Thank you. It looks like Jessica's hand is raised again. Do you want to unmute?
Yes, I can't, I wasn't allowed. Greetings, everyone. I saw someone else asked the question and it wasn't answered about employment opportunities. Whom do we send our resume to and when will those opportunities become available?
Judy, do you want to take that one?
Sure. So we'll be working with you all to give you information about when the training opportunities will be available, what sort of trainings will be available, what positions we expect to have available, everything. And on the whole, there might be some exceptions, but on the whole, we expect the construction jobs to begin opening up when we start construction. And the training will be beginning before then. So I don't know, actually, Ellie or Ayana, if you want to jump in specifically on the timing. But we'll really welcome, before I turn it over to you, we'll really welcome everyone who's interested in these jobs to, you know, get in touch. And if you're interested now and just want to make sure that you'll get the information, you can email us at info@harlemriver.org. And we will keep your name and make sure that as soon as we have the training schedule figured out and the jobs that we know we're hiring for, we'll be able to share that information with you. Excuse.
If I say one thing?
Sure.
So Jessica, great question. And one, one thing I want to encourage is I know that there are a lot of notices all over the development. There's flyers all over the place. And unfortunately, it is one major way that we're able to communicate with people and send messages. We also certainly do send emails when we have your email address or make phone calls when we can. But fliering is an important way that we communicate. So the reason I'm saying that is when it comes to things like employment opportunities, this is absolutely something that we will be posting flyers about. So I really encourage you, Jessica, if you're interested in this program and everyone else, to really keep an eye on building notices as we continue through this process because it is a major way that we let you know about things, in addition to mailings and phone calls and emails. It's easier for us if you provide your email address and your phone number because it's just easier to reach you. And if you'd like to do that, please reach out to info@harlemriver.org or call us to provide that. But I just, you know, you're hearing, you're hearing us say that we don't have an answer yet in terms of the exact timing. And it is something that we will be telling you when you know the answer. And I just want to make sure that you keep an eye on where those messages might come from.
And I also add that we're, we're working on a display box for each of your buildings. So we, in the chat, someone recognized that there's a lot of flyers posted in your building and it's causing, you know, it's just jamming your hallways. But we are working on a display box that allows us to directly message to you. So that should be coming. In the meantime, continue to look out for fliering throughout the building.
Thank you, Sam and Christina. I want to, it looks like Candy V has a question and can't raise her hand. And I want to get to her in a second, but I'd like Ellie to speak a little bit more about the hiring schedule. And then we can also, and also please tell people where they can send their resumes or the process for that.
I think right now it was at info@harlemriver.org. Is that, is that correct? So info@harlemriver.org. And I would just add, send it now. There's, there's no need to wait. Send your resume now. We're happy to look at it. We have other opportunities. They're not necessarily limited to this job site. The training, I think we have to work out the exact timing with the construction, the real scope starting the summer of next year. We'd want to get training in a couple of months before that. Training typically meaning your OSHA, your OSHA-required safety training. So I see someone on the chat just posted they have the 48-hour training, which is great. So please forward resumes to info@harlemriver.org. This is something that it's going to be longer conversations. And like Sam, Sam said, we'll post lots of notices about it. This is something that we're very excited about to get the community involved. If, you know, construction is all about opportunity, if there are people interested out there, we are going to do our best to plug them in and make something happen.
Thanks, Ellie. Sam, do you mind talking Candy V through, or Candy V, do you want to unmute yourself?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the, all the information. I have two questions. The first one is, I live on the first floor. I have about 10 years in the same apartment. And throughout the 10 years, I constantly, I don't want to exaggerate, but every other month I have leaks coming supposedly from the apartment above and from the ceiling or whatever the case is. And they open the walls, they fix it, and then I have the problem over and over and over again. So I understand all the information that you guys are given in regards to the repair. But at this point, I think that I'm not sure if repairing the damage is going to fix it permanently because it's so old and so bad that I don't know if probably the whole thing has to be like knocked down completely and built over again in order to fix the problem. That's my main concern. And I have two young children and I have crack pain, not just in the bathroom or the kitchen, but throughout the whole entire apartment. My living room, I have crack pain everywhere, even in the bedroom above our bed. So it's not just like the living, the kitchen and the bathroom that needs the most work, but it's the whole entire apartment. That's my first thing. And the other thing is, usually we have, in my case, every time I have a problem, I put a ticket and depending on the situation, they respond in a very timely, timely manner. What's going to happen to all the NICA staff that we currently have available? I don't want to say all the time, but they, they usually available when we need them to come and fix and take care of the problems that we are having. What's going to happen to all of them?
Thank you, Candy. I'm going to direct the first part of your question to Ellie.
Sure. So first of all, Candy, would you mind clarifying what building you're in? Or you can send it to us offline if you want also at the info@harlemriver.org. Maybe that's, that's probably a better idea. So the, the quick answer is that leaks come from various places, right? So our first.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was trying to unmute myself. My building is 211B.
211B. Okay, thank you. It's just, it's good to know. So a couple of things. First of all, when we put on the new roofs, that will, that will help a lot. The other place, there are a couple of other places that water infiltration could be coming from, and we plan on addressing all of them. So if you had a recurring leak limited to the bathroom area, then I would assume it's just the plumbing in the apartment above you. We'll replace the tubs. We're replacing all the tub traps. We're repairing any damaged risers. So these aren't Band-Aid approaches. These are full replacements, which will get rid of any longstanding leaks. If the, if the leaks are throughout your apartment, then it sounds like it's potentially coming from the facade, which is why I wanted to know the building because the, the buildings are old and we have a substantial, our consultants have actually already been out to both Harlem River 1 and Harlem River 2 to determine what brick has to be replaced. Do we need to re-point the entire property, which it looks like we do? And we have, we can, we can reach out to you offline. Like I said, we can schedule testing specifically in your, in your apartment. I mean, if you'd be open to that, that would actually be really helpful to us to determine what the exact condition of the brick is. Normal approach is just to, is just to re-point and to replace the brick as needed. If we find out that there's additional damage or there's interior damage to your plaster walls, that will have to be addressed in a permanent fashion. This is, this is our shot at getting into the units and doing all the required work, not, not a quick fix.
Thank you, Ellie. I just want to remind folks that we have about nine to 10 minutes left. And Judy, do you want to quickly address what will happen with the existing NICA staff? And, or actually, I think that's an appropriate question for Kyle.
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yes. Candy mentioned the NICA staff who is on site to, you know, fix repairs. And so she's asking what will happen with the existing NICA staff?
So NICA requires the property management team to give offers to the management staff for, for, for positions after conversion.
Great, thanks, Kyle. And then you also offer them the opportunity to be redeployed within another NICA development?
That is true. If they, if they choose to decline the offer from the new management company.
Great. Thanks so much. I want to go back and give the, give an opportunity to the translation rooms to ask questions. Are there any questions from the Spanish Mandarin or Haitian Creole rooms? It would be helpful, actually, to raise your hands also if there are.
Excuse me. This is Amanda and I. We have one new question, please.
Yes.
The question is, right now, I'm working on my unit repairs to NICA to raise that questions. And, you know, every time I call a phone number ends in 7771 and they do provide the repairs. Thank you very much. But my question is, after that, after trans, you know, after changing into the Section 8, then what should I do if I have some repaired issue? Thank you.
That's a, that's a great question. Judy or Mike or Doreen, do one of you want to take this?
Sure. So after the conversion, there will be essentially, either we could report or reuse the existing numbers that you're comfortable using, or we will issue correspondence to all residents in a number of different ways. We could do it in writing. You know, maybe it's come, you know, June or July or the summer of 2021. Things are a little different with the pandemic and we can meet in person. But the idea is to have a very clear line of communication, a direct line of communication. So any, for any repairs, any needs and you have any issues whatsoever, it could go far beyond typical repair and maintenance type issues. There will be a direct number to call and there is an internal escalation. So I'll use my example, myself as an example. There will be a number of dedicated site personnel on this property in all different management capacities. They will field your call or the call will be routed. You'll have a prompting option. Press one for security, press two for maintenance and repairs, press three for renewals, whatever, recertifications, compliance, and these questions. So there'll be a whole prompt setup. We're also exploring different technology that exists that's also electronic. So if you prefer to perhaps text or email a work order, there's a couple of different options that we may introduce here. But a simple phone number works very effectively. We have a very, very high call success rate, which means we connect on our calls. We don't, they don't drop. The calls continue to rotate until you eventually receive someone. And that actually works overnight as well. So there will be 24/7 staffing on-site dedicated. So when you make a call, you will reach somebody. And for some crazy reason, if one of those employees or associates of ours are on the other line or there's just a lot of call volume at that given moment, the calls actually route to the cell phones of a number of folks in our company, including the executive team, which includes me. So that is not uncommon for me to, you know, or any executive in the CNC side to receive calls at, you know, different times of the day and night where we are responding. So every once in a call, 24 hours a day, seven days a week on the management side.
Thanks so much.
This is Judy.
Thank you.
I'm just going to jump in real quick that in case that was, there's going to be a lot of options. So that might have been a little bit complicated. And before CNC takes over, there's going to be a lot of information for you to make sure that you will know exactly what to do whenever it comes up. And, you know, as Mike said, you'll have a lot of different ways that you'll be able to get in touch.
Thanks so much. And I think Judy, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a hotline number that folks can call. So we have a couple more hands that are raised that have been raised for a while. So I definitely want to get them before Cheryl, do you mind unmuting, please? Thank you. You're muted again. There you go.
Oh, okay. So I did ask the question. A lot of things are very vague. So you did say that NICA no longer, I mean, NICA will own the buildings, but they're not, we are no longer NICA tenants. That's, that's part one. And can you explain the fair market rate? Because I don't think the tenants understand when you say flat rate, you no longer will be on a, a flat rate. So that flat rate, isn't that that like 17% credit that the tenants get along with the 30%? So when you say 30%, that's what they'll be getting. They're not, I don't think tenants understand that their rent will be increased about 17% when you take that, that flat rate. So can you explain that, that a little further? And when you said that there's going to be a five-year phase. So we have a lot of senior citizens. We have a lot of people that are on low income. So when they get, when, after that five-year phase, what will happen to those tenants if they can't meet that, that, that 17% increase on a consistent basis?
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I'm going to direct your question to. Thank you, Ms. Jones. I'm going to direct, uh, your question to Robert.
Yeah. Hi. Again, I, I just want to clarify. So it's, the term is flat rent. Okay. And it deals with public housing residents who basically have high incomes and it's capped. So if you're a public housing resident that is not high income and you're already paying 30%, you're not part of this conversation. That's fine. But the flat rent folks, okay. When we convert, whatever you were paying to NICA before the conversion. The next month when we convert, you're gonna be paying that same rent amount. And you're gonna pay that same flat rent until your first section eight annual review. Okay. Cause again, like we said, NICA is not going away. Now you're not going to be considered a public housing tenant anymore, but you will be considered a NICA section eight tenant. And that gradual increase over five years will get you to 30%.
Robert, can you, can you address, um, the, about the 17% gap? I, it's not.
I, I'm not clear. I'm with us. If there's someone from public housing that can, you know, elaborate, I'm, I'm not familiar with 17%. Well, I know that flat rents are different based on, um, residents who have different incomes. Uh, all I can say is that the folks who are not paying 30% are your flat rent tenants. And I think it varies, so I'm not really familiar with how that works. But, um, maybe someone in the public housing, so I can get back to that question. But I, I can't answer that. I'm not familiar with the 17% where that's coming from.
And, um, this is Marissa from NICA. Just to jump in, I just want to be clear. Most folks who do pay 30% of their income, that, most folks do pay 30% of their income today. And that will continue after the conversion. That will not change. It's only if you currently play, pay flat rent. Will, uh, what Robert described, uh, take place. So if you pay 30% of your income today, that will not change after the conversion.
Thanks, Marissa. So we're actually, um, at, uh, time, but Harmon has had, uh, their hand up for a while. So I do want to address this and then, um, uh, we will turn it over to Donald. Actually, it looks like Harmon's question is no longer.
Hi, I am.
Oh, here we go. Right. Uh, yes, please ask your question.
Okay. So my question is, um, I am aware that section eight vouchers have, uh, income limits for different households. So I was wondering, um, if your household increases, uh, if your household income increases over the current income limits. Uh, to have that voucher, uh, will you still be able to hold on to the voucher? And then also will you be eligible to apply for the portable voucher if your income, if your income increases over that limit?
Great question. So I do want to basically confirm that when we do this conversion. Okay. The section eight income limits do not apply. So essentially everyone is eligible to convert to section eight. Now, in terms of your individual household income, that plays an important role as to whether or not, uh, you'll get a subsidy. Because if you are, 30% uh, is equal to or greater than what we call the contract rent for your apartment. That's considered a zero subsidy. Now, again, you can remain in the apartment, um, and get the renovations. That's fine. But if you're looking to transfer out of the apartment with a tenant based voucher after one year. Uh, as long as you're eligible for a subsidy, you'll be eligible to request a transfer. Which again, uh, will be a tenant based voucher, which will allow you to transfer anywhere within the five boroughs or outside of New York City. And I saw a question, what is the difference between tenant based and project based? And really project based, the subsidy is tied to the unit. The tenant based voucher is, is portable. And that's something where, um, you know, residents who after one year from conversion were interested. Maybe they want to go to a warm climate and they want to move. That's fine. But we are finding that in our past rad PAC deals, that a lot of folks opt to stay and rightfully so. Because they're getting renovated apartments and they're staying in the neighborhood. But at the same time, everyone's income is different. And, uh, it all depends upon your income as to what the subsidy amount is going to be for your, for your apartment.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. Um, so I'd like to, uh, I think we're at time. So I'd like to turn it over to Donald, uh, to wrap up and, um. Thank you, everyone, for your questions. And hopefully this is an opportunity for the team to, um, you know, speak with you and continue to speak with you. And create, um, open lines of communication and build trust with, uh, the community. So Donald?
Yes. Hi. Good, good evening, everybody. And this is, good night, everybody, because it's a little after eight. But, um, this is Donald Notice, Executive Director for West Harlem Group Assistance. And we're excited about this, this project. We've, um, you know, come to the table as Alexis said, as two not-for-profits. You know, doing this project together. Our mission is about, you know, preserving affordable housing. We have a great development team and we're here to get this project done and get all of your questions answered. I sat through the whole presentation and there's great, you know, questions. And we're gonna get it, um, answered through all of the mechanisms that was mentioned this evening. I remember doing a project similar in 2015 through 2019, Randolph Houses. And the tenants was just as passionate and had, you know, just as many good questions. And we was able to deliver that project. And the thing about West Harlem and Settlement Housing Fund is, 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 is we're here. We're here in the community and we're here to stay in the community. They've been around maybe a little bit longer than us, 50 something years. And we're at 49 years and we will be here as we finish this project. And, you know, I know COVID-19 is around, but you know, if it wasn't COVID-19, we would be up in personal and, and, and getting this done. So I, I'm just honored to be a part of this project. And I'm glad that West Harlem and Settlement Housing, CNC, LMN, we all teamed up to deliver this project. Thank you and good evening.